Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for joining me. This is my opinion piece for the Exeter Township Supervisors Meeting that was held on October 12th, 2020. I'm going to talk about five items. The first thing I'm going to discuss is the chef and the Kubota tractor. And I'm going to skip to the refinancing, or I'm sorry, the payments to the pension plans, the meetings, and then I'm going to have a discussion about the refinancing as my last item. So a lot of things are going on in this meeting. I wish I could talk about them more, but this is going to be a rather lengthy opinion piece to begin with, with the things that have been going on. So, let's talk about the chef. This is, to me, professionally, working in business for so many years, this is absolutely ridiculous, what I saw with his presentation. The agenda, well, before I get into the chef, let me just make this very clear point. The chef is here doing this ridiculous presentation because it's a political payoff. I believe that there were some people that helped Mr. Casadis, it's my opinion, Mr. Casadis get elected as an alternate to the GOP convention. And in return for getting elected, his favor is to hire this guy, and we're going to pay him over $5,000. Just really crazy, you know? It's not going to benefit this community at all, and I'll explain why later on in a few minutes, seconds, but it's just juice for this goose. And Casadis, this is the things that he does. And if there's any way we can ever get him off the board, we should do it. But it looks like we're stuck with him for this year and another three years. But if you reelect this guy, you know, it's a huge mistake. And I hope that you learn by the time that we elect, reelect him, that it's not worth it. He's costing us too much. This is the guy that cost us $4 million related to the Running Country Club, $200,000 related to a federal lawsuit, alright? Anyway, so this is a political payoff. So the agenda said, if you read the agenda, that this was going to be a brief presentation. It wasn't brief at all. It lasted 43 minutes and 46 seconds. And if I was just to give you an idea of how I felt as I watched this, my feeling was at the time, it was like watching paint dry, okay? If this guy graduated from Cornell, it wasn't in finance, I can tell you that. But most of the information, what he presented was easily found out on the internet. Well, so we paid someone five grand to just go out and get stuff off the internet and put it together, presented to five supervisors who are too lazy to do their own work. And we have this huge staff, they're not doing it either. I'm telling you folks, the waste in this township is enormous. So most of this information easily found, and Chef Keith simply regurgitated it. Worthless information, that's not going to help us. Because in the end, you'll hear in his presentation, someone asks him, "What about COVID-19?" Well, all the numbers I presented to you are really blown out of the water. It changes the whole idea of what we're doing here, so they don't really know. The other thing was, the presentation was supposed to given months ago. He actually broke his contract with us, I think. He was going to give it in a more timely manner. But most of the information that he presented to us was from the perspective of the leasing. And what we really need to do is look at it from the perspective of us, the lessor. So what are we looking for in potential vendors, okay? That are going to actually lease this property? Are we going to do it on a straight lease? Is it going to be a triple net lease? What controls are we going to keep in place for us? Tucker, I have a puppy here, and I kind of indulge him when I shouldn't, and he's here playing with his toys, that's what you saw, heard there. So, back to the chef. So, this presentation is what someone would look at if they were planning on leasing this facility and running their operations out of it. And I'm really concerned about some of the stuff that the chef presented, especially the couple worksheets at the beginning, they're all zeros. I mean, what's that all about? That's crazy, isn't it? And then when he talks about the revenue and the amount of money that could be generated, we're looking at entrees that cost $13.50. This is another crazy thing. We want something that's fine dining. We have, you know, these restaurants that anybody could go to and get those kinds of foods. The soul chef here, I don't know what he had in his mind, but I think we should be working towards a fine dining situation, not something that's $13. We could get that anywhere now. So, think about that. And he, his contract, when I look at this, you know, it was only, he didn't sign it, it was only signed by Greg Gaultier. But he promised the engagement for the complete project will be $5,500. So they'll probably pay him off, right? But he was supposed to provide a feasibility site survey and include, but not limited to, agenda, location, demand, demographics. I didn't see any of that. Historical data and physical plant analysis. You see any of that in his presentation? Repair and maintenance assessment. Absolutely nothing there in his presentation. CG and S and FF and E requirements. Not a thing, not a thing. Management team descriptions and qualifications. We didn't hear that, we didn't see it. Event sales briefs. Oh, we might have heard a little bit about that, but that was in a generalized situation with the overall restaurant statistics. The product, gracious hospitality. Marketing, planning, and conditions. It was absurd, you know? New revenue centers. You know, we know what our revenue centers are. We're food, beverage, and banquets, alright? General store and direct-to-consumer sales. Proposed operation review. I didn't see that except his insinuation that we could be a shady maple operation. Is he serious? Really? And then he was going to present the financial file, which would be a capital budget. Well, there wasn't any capital budget. He didn't do his homework to go in and review and see what kind of capital improvements needed to be made. He didn't even include the HVAC system that we're going to be spending $300,000 for. And there's much more. It needs to be handicap-ready. You know, the kitchen is a mess, and we need a dumb waiter to get food up to the second level now that that's built out. Sales projections are ridiculous at this point. It depends on who the leasing is, what kind of foods we're going to have. So it's just a waste of everyone's time. Labor projections as well. This is something that the lessor would be concerned about, I'm sorry, the leasing would be concerned about, not the lessor. Why do we care what the labor projections are? Someone else is going to run it, we're going to lease it to them. Budget assumptions, the same thing. The only budget assumptions that we need to be concerned about are things that we agreed to pay for before the leasing takes possession, signs the contract. And these annual operating budgets, operating budget summary, projected sources and uses of cash. We didn't see any of these things in his presentation. And the five-year operating projections. You know, this guy is just out in left field. I think he took on more than he really could handle. But again, when you look at this, you understand that it was a political job on us. So, with that, say enough of that on the chef. The next thing is the Kubota tractor, okay? This is an effort in uncreative finance. And also fuzzy accounting, if you listen to what Jen Savage and the supervisors, along with Joe Staub are talking about, it's absolutely ridiculous. They claim that this Kubota tractor is in the budget, but as a big finance, alright? So they decided that, Staub says, "Well, we have the money, let's just pay cash." So let's blow up the budget even more than it already has blown up. And the budget, you know, it's contrary to what we approved in the budget. So you're actually breaking a, you made a motion to accept this budget, so now you're breaking the decision that you made. And the golf club boys, the golf club boys are the ones that want to do all this. There's no question about it. Do we need this Kubota tractor now? No. We could refurbish the old one. What did they say it needed? The only thing that was clear was it needed four tires. So for $4,000 in tires, we're going to spend $30,000 for a brand-new tractor, okay? Fuzzy accounting on top of that as well, so. More wasted money, all coming out of the sewer fund proceeds. So the next thing we'll talk about is the pension plan. The pension plan and their contributions, well, we donated, December 23rd, 2019, $9,575,875 to the pension plan. Now, there were no reports presented, there were no analysis made of the unfunded liabilities. Why? There should be some type of information regarding the unfunded liabilities, and if it's necessary, to really make this contribution. Why am I focusing on this? Because we want to keep this money in the township's name, so that we can earn the interest. And when it's time and we need to increase the pension plan payments, we could do that. But there's not one word about what the unfunded liabilities are in these pensions. It behooves them to do that. It's a disgrace to this township that they just act on issues and do not present the facts. So, it's just one ridiculous thing after another. I also want to talk about the open meetings. Many municipalities around us are doing everything they can to open up their meetings to their constituents, to their taxpayers, except us. We are the richest, we have more assets than any of these other municipalities around us, yet we're not getting any effort by our supervisors to find a way to do it. They say that they can only have nine people in a meeting. That's a joke, because they're presenting to us the old meeting room, which is a fire hazard to begin with and can only hold so many people. We have the Running Country Club, we have the library, that's closed, we could use it now. We have Dunn Center. There are plenty of venues where we can have meetings where people can attend. And those who can't get in, they should still project this meeting over Zoom. That should never go away in the future. It should always be Zoom so people can watch it from home. But we should have it so people can attend it as well. So it's disingenuous of them, and there's a reason why they're keeping it closed. They keep us at arm's length, they can do what they want. It prevents, we can't really make comments because there's not enough information to derive any type of sense of what's going to happen and what they're going to talk about. And by the time they do, it's too late. You can't really make a comment at the next meeting. And if you did, you'd only get three minutes on non-agenda items. So, they're not really fair to us. They enjoy the seclusion they're getting. And we have the means and the assets to do this, but they'll give us excuse after excuse. But don't you believe it. They love the situation they're in now, they're going to take us through the rest of the year. And if it's possible, even though they're claiming January, they will still keep the meetings closed. So, I saved the best for last. The refi, you know, they're trying to confuse the public is what they're doing, and trying to confuse everyone else. But this refinancing is completely unnecessary. No need to refinance. And the reason why is, is they're worried about the balloon payments, really. But they're also trying to free up more money in the next five to 10 years, so that they have, in my opinion, more money they could steal or waste. They're very inefficient with our money. They don't care. So, but we have a 7 million CD that matured last year, I believe. That's plenty of money to cover all the balloon payments that are due. And they took 2.4 million of that 7 million CD and used it to buy the promenade, by the way. So, but there's over 4 million left, and that's about what is needed to handle the balloon payments. And I got a schedule from them. I'm going to put that in my presentation when you get a chance to review this. It'll be the first slide you see, and hopefully it's not too small. But basically what it is, it's, I'm looking at the 2015 A bonds. These are bonds that were used to refinance the purchase of the Running Country Club. It was actually, I think, the second refinancing. So now they want to do it again. But if you look at the schedule, you'll see that the first three years, the bond coupon rate is 2%. It's excellent. And then it goes up a little bit, at 2026 will be 2.35%. And then from 2027 to 2033, 34, 35, to 2035, it'll be 3%. And then the last two years, it goes up to 3.6%. But it says that if we, if we just go with the schedule and continue paying as it is, at the end of 2037, we will have paid off these bonds. It would have cost us $6,925,000 to do so, from 2020 to 2037. Now, I'm going to show you another schedule, presentation, after my discussion on this, that will compare that chart, pretty much, to what they're going to do with refinancing, and how that's going to look. And what they don't reveal is what that interest rate is supposed to be. And they back-end load the payments, so that in the first 10 years, they have maybe an extra $100,000 every year that these guys can manipulate and abuse, instead of paying it off. And what you should notice is that the total cost for maturity on these refinanced bonds are going to be $7,244,594. And when you see my presentation, I try to make it very simple and clear what's going on, so that everyone can understand it. And you'll see that there is no savings. There's not a fact that costs us over a half, almost $600,000 more. Now, the board, also, in their infinite wisdom and their lack of understanding of finance, has decided to use 2.4 million of cash that we have from the sewer plant to pay down these bonds. Now, that's a mistake, Tucker, quiet. It's a mistake because this is money in our hands. Why would you give it up? You know, I've never been in favor of this kind of thing. Pay the bonds off, we borrowed the money, the interest rates are not exorbitant. Let's go with what we have. You know, keep that cash in our hands. Because it's, again, a very myopic view of these supervisors that, because when the interest rates start rising, and they will rise, we will see the day, not too far away, when we're getting 5% or 6% on our cash. And that's a lot of money of $40 million. Unfortunately, it's, 40 million's not going to be there when we need it, okay? So, look at my second chart, where it compares the current debt on this 2015 A bonds, and compares it to what it looks like with their refinancing. It's not good. And what we have is a group of supervisors who simply do not understand what they're doing. I can't blame PFM too much, they're out to make a commission, so they want this to happen. They're doing what the board supervisors are asking, asking them to smooth out the payments, but that's not necessary. What's disingenuous of both parties is to try to tell us that we're saving money, because we're not saving any money. We're just kicking the can down the road, and it's going to be up to future generations to pay it. We already know that they have in the budget to spend $20 million on the promenade. But that's, that's not the end of it. It's going to end up being all the money we have. They're going to suck out all the cash that they can to these contractors that they're going to hire from out of the county, probably from Conshohocken. They're related to some people you already know that do deals inside this, our community, and pretty much control the two board members, Beast and Casadis. They're not smart enough to figure out all this stuff. They're just doing what they're told to do, trust me. We got to get rid of them as soon as we can, and I need you folks to start looking at what they're doing, asking questions, and criticize them. Now, take a look at the two schedules that I'm going to show you. The one that I got from the township, which is the unrefunded payments schedule of the 2015 A bonds. The second one is, will show you a comparison of the same thing, the current bond situation versus what PFM says they're going to do in refinancing just the 2015 A bonds. And I think it'll show you how they tried to deceive us. And it is deception, there's no question about it. So, enjoy this and enjoy the video of the meeting. Remember, we're dealing with people that simply do not care about our community. That's obvious, and it should become more and more obvious each time I do these opinion pieces. Thank you for listening to me, and have a good evening. This is a schedule that I recently received from the township regarding a right-to-know request I submitted. And these are specifically the 2015 A bonds. These were issued to refinance the Running Country Club purchase. And as you can see, if you look closely, that this arrow, item A, shows you the interest rates that we're paying on these bonds. 2% for several years in the beginning, later goes up to 3%. So these are very good interest rates that we're paying to the bondholders. Nothing really terrible that I see there. No reason to refinance them for this rate. And then you'll see item B, which is the total amount of money that we would pay out if we just left these bonds alone and paid them to the end of the maturity. And you can see that what we'll pay is $6,925,085. It's important to keep this in mind, because I'll show you later what the total amount we will pay if we refinance these 2015 A bonds, as PFM is suggesting that we do. This is a very important slide. I hope everyone will take the time to study this. I've made it as easy as I could possibly make it for everyone to understand. PFM, I think, did not present the information in a way that everyone could clearly understand it, and that's the way they like to do it. They want to make this stuff look like it's really complex, when it's really not that complex to begin with. And our five supervisors have no clue what they were looking at. They just, all they wanted to see was that their debt payments would be flattened out every year, so that they'll have more money in the early years that they can blow frivolously on things that, like they're doing today. So, let's look at this first issue here, A. So what I'm doing is, I'm adjusting the left side of this report, because you can see if you compare the current outstanding debt to the schedule that PFM presented, 2020 is not in their presentation. So we want to subtract out the $238,978 from the total at the bottom of the schedule on the left, which has $6,925,085. So we'll subtract out that 2020 payment, so our total then, to compare to the PFM schedule, is really $6,686,107, which is the amount that they're actually going to refinance for 2021. So, what we want to do then is compare this amount, because the schedule on the left, if we left everything as it is, and I showed you in an earlier slide that these bonds were paying 2%, 3% on, we would end up paying forward-going $6,686,107. However, if you look at the refinancing plan just for the 2015 A bonds, and they're claiming a $300,000 present value savings cost, we'll just ignore that. Because what we're going to look at, we're going to look at the bottom line. What would we be paying out if we paid these off to maturity? And as you can see here, we would end up paying $7,244,594 versus the $6,686,107. So, you don't have to be a genius to figure out in item C, subtracting the quantity in item B from quantity from the schedule on the right of $7,244,594. And it's cost, it would cost us $558,487 more. So, there's madness, there's logic to their madness, because a couple things are going to happen. And you can see the payments, they go down, lower in the refinancing scenario. So they're trying to push everything in the back end, so that they have more money to, I don't know, in my opinion, steal it, misuse it, abuse it. But it's $558,487 more. There is no savings, folks. Don't buy this blarney that they're spouting out to us, okay? It is more, it's common sense, compare the two, alright? So we're, they've agreed to do this, actually, they've agreed to put $2.4 million of our own money to even lower it further. So it's really ridiculous. I wanted to compare this just to 2015 A bonds, which is their focus right now, to show you that, how we're being taken advantage of. This doesn't make any sense to me. The only people that really benefit from this are going to be PFM, who earn commissions on doing the refinancing for us. And you can see also, it pushes our debt out on, this is the Running Country Club debt. I mean, we keep pushing it out and pushing it out. So you can see that if we go with our original plan, we pay all this off at 2037. But now they're going to push it out to 2044, okay? So that's seven more years and $558,000 more dollars. It's, from an FPNA perspective, financial planning and analysis, which they, none of them know anything about, for a municipality, this doesn't make sense. You're pushing this debt out to future generations. And we should be paying this off right now, today, keeping the original schedule. And the first couple of years on our left-hand schedule here, you can see the township's food and beverage business was contributing $250,000 a year to these payments. So, running the food and beverage business was covering this debt for these years, except they've blown it up. It sits there idle, and it's their responsibility to maintain our assets, and they haven't been doing it. It's fallen apart. So, don't believe everything these guys are telling you. I'm going to show you, I'm showing you clearly and plainly how to analyze the numbers that they're giving us. This is all an attempt to overlook issues. This is all an attempt to overlook issues and to just give these five supervisors extra money in the first, uh, 10 years. So, it's not good for us. Tell them, email them, confront them when you see them in public, and tell them, you don't want to do this. It doesn't make any sense. And we had a $7 million CD that came, uh, that matured, that we can use to pay off any of the balloon payments that are coming forward, so they'll give you the excuse that we've got these big balloon payments coming due. Uh, this is just a misguided effort to take advantage of the township's funds. We're a very rich township, and they're exploiting that. And they have people behind them that are going to be getting this money when we give out the contracts to people from outside of this ta-, uh, county that are going to do this building if they, if they really get it passed to do the building up at the promenade. So, don't buy this. 558,000 dollars more, and taxes we'll have to pay out to these bonds, and for more years. So, think about this, and, uh, if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to have you contact me, and I'll show you how this works. This is the last slide, uh, I wanted to show you. Uh, what I'm doing here is taking, you know, uh, the finance guy's numbers, uh, that they showed us in the meeting, and on the left-hand side, I'm showing you a chart that shows the current debt that we, the money we owe, and on the right-hand side is what they're selling us. Jamie from PFB or whatever it is is telling us is going to be our payments after they refi. All right? And I just want to make a note here, number A. Those, that number is really our 2020 debt service payments. And, uh, as Jennifer Savage has indicated in the recent, uh, supervisors' meeting, that we've made all of our debt payments for 2020. So we can actually take those out, that take that number out on both charts. But even if we don't take it out, if we leave it in, the number remains the same. The estimated savings over the course of these years from 2021 to 2044, uh, will be the same. The savings amount will be the same, and I'll show you what that is in a second. And then if you look at B, I'm just showing you that, if it's, it's hard to read the totals on both graphs, but those are the totals, uh, with the 2020 debt service, uh, payments in there. And you can see, I do a little calculation and back it out. In C, the, these would be the numbers if you took out the 788,000 dollars. And, uh, in D, our savings estimate is 100,000 dollars. That's what we're going to save in like 23 years. But are we really saving 100,000? Because what we don't have in here are all the costs of refinancing. So, what they've done is, they have it, they're not reducing our debt, really, they're just pushing it out, and they're making the early payments smaller so that this board of supervisors, which I consider extremely corrupt, will have more money to spend and transfer to, uh, other companies that they work with. So, 100,000, all this for 100,000 dollars. And when you, when you factor in the fact that Mr. Staub wants us to pay 2.4 million upfront, it's even worse. And that number's not talked about here, it's not integrated in these numbers, but they've decided to spend additional 2.4 million dollars to lower the debt. And what this does is, it just go, flies in the face of logic. Now, you'll see in the, if you look at all the data that Jamie has provided, there's boxes in there about the present value of savings. Well, it all has to do with time value of money. The old, the old thing about a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. So if that's true, and as far as I know, those dynamics have not changed. So we're going to give up 2.4 million dollars today for future savings. It doesn't make sense. We've got that money in our hands now, we should not spend it. It's coming out of the sewer fund proceeds, which they, they're spending like madmen. And, uh, I think it's a mistake. Mr. Staub has suggested this, and it tells me that he knows very little about financial planning and cash flows. He's just a mortgage broker. And why they're doing this, I really can't explain it to you, it doesn't, because it's illogical from the beginning to the end. We should not spend this money, we should keep it. But it looks like they've already decided to go with that scenario. So, the people of Exeter Township, we suffer, we suffer from these people who do not allow the public to, uh, get involved in the dialogue. We're not allowed to ask pertinent questions, they shut us out, and this is the result of that. Very poor decision-making, very poor planning. If I could keep 2.4 million dollars in my pocket and push it out to pay, to pay off this debt with cheaper dollars, because that's what inflation is going to do. And they talk about the fact that the interest rates are low now. That's not going to be the case in the future. And I want to remind you that these two charts here are looking at our total debt. So I showed you the chart earlier, just looking at the 2015 A bonds and how we're not saving any money on that. This looks at the total debt situation. So finally, if you look at E, and I basically say, after refi expenses, there are no savings. There's nothing. You know, really, 100,000 dollars savings over 23 years or so? That's ridiculous. And you know what's going to happen? Jamie and his team are going to come back and say at some point in time, "Well, we think you should refinance again." So all it is, is smoothing out the payments, which is what they're really wanting to do. But they've deceived us. They not, they do not show us really what's happening. They make us think that we're saving money. In fact, Jennifer Savage made a comment, I believe in the budget meeting, where she said, "We, uh, expect savings of as much as 500,000 dollars." Well, you can see, it's not even close to that. She doesn't know what she's talking about, really. She is not qualified to be in the position she's in, and our township suffers. We have wasted so many millions of dollars by the ineptitude of a few people. David Speas and John Casadis are running a show, and you can see, this show is about how to create a disaster in a very wealthy township. So, I urge everyone to get on the phone, get in the emails. If you know these people personally, ask them, "What are they thinking?" And what I've done is, I presented to you with these couple slides, just the basic, really, information you need to look at, the bottom line, so to speak. These are not my numbers. These are Jamie's numbers. This is the finance company that's going to refinance our bonds. And as you listen to the presentation, there's like no questions from the board of supervisors. And I can tell you, there's no questions, because they don't understand what they're looking at. But I've kind of reduced it down to its simplest form, looking at the bottom line. And I hope you can see what I've done here, and if you have any questions, please contact me, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. But this is all nonsense, it's all smoke and mirrors, and it's wasting our money, it's not necessary. We have the money to pay the balloon payments off, we should let the debt go, the interest rates are very nice for us, as they are. So this is the last slide. As you move into, uh, the meeting video, uh, pay attention to what they're saying and remember what I've shown you here. Thank you.